All right, good morning. Happy February. This is the Monday, so meeting of the Connecticut State Board of Education called for February 1st, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. It is now 9:33, and we will call this meeting to order since it is here. Thank you. Let's begin by rising to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, our which is stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will begin this meeting with our public participation portion. When your name is called, we'll ask you to come to the table where the mic is. Please state your name and address for the record. And we will ask that you leave your comments for three minutes. And if you begin to go a little beyond three minutes, you will get a nudge from me to please wrap up your final thoughts. Hey, good morning, our first speaker is Lauren Carpentier.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments with the State Board of Education today. My name is Lauren Carpentier, and I am the Director of Education Programs at Alberta's Magnus College. I am here today as a two to represent the AACTE Connecticut chapter. Firstly, in regards to our ECT speaking accreditation report. We hosted our Cape Creditors for the virtual site visit this past April. And as much as it was a chance to highlight the success of our ECT, it was also a great learning experience. Since we received no stipulations, we were granted full accreditation for seven years. However, we did receive areas for improvement, and I want to briefly mention how we are addressing these. Specifically, I want to address the areas for improvement for standard one. Although we have many opportunities for our candidates to display their ability to apply their knowledge of diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as technology, our creditors wanted to see more alignment of those specific in task standards, seven and eight referred to on all of our syllabi and key assessments. While they were present on our key assessments, our syllabi were specifically aligned to the corresponding ECT two standards. So we needed more triangulation of these standards in regard to our syllabi. I want to assure the board that of our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And want to quickly highlight one development that we have integrated this past, the past two years, which is to partner with an organization called Multicultural Classroom, which is run by two dividendated educators whose mission is to educate on anti-racist teaching. They have a workbook called The Anti-Racist Teacher that we have been using in our curriculum for the past two years. And the founder, Lorraine Duran, she runs workshops and discussion forums for our students. It is an extremely virtual partnership, and that is just one of the initiatives that we've taken to really prepare our teachers in this regard. I can assure you that all of our AFI will be appropriately resolved. At this stage, we have a number of developments to report out on our Cape annual report that is due on April 30, and we will continue to strive to address all of those AFI appropriately. I would now briefly transition to my second reason for being here, which is to represent the AACTE Connecticut. On behalf of myself and the AACTE Connecticut, thank you to the Board of Ed, Commissioner Rossell Tucker, the Department of Education, and especially to the town board's office. I want to briefly express our support of the initiative of the G4 ECT grant to alleviate teacher certification and exam costs. We are already seeing the benefits of this with our teacher candidates who no longer need to use their own funds for these tests. And they are, it's a big morale booster. We also refer to see many of our elected official proposals for our legislative.
Christine Redstock. Good morning, everybody. I'm Christine Redstock, a transsexual woman from Middletown. I'm here to speak out against social emotional learning, which induces sex and gender issues, particularly in elementary and junior high schools. While it sounds good on paper, this is actually hurting our children. Many kids will be thinking that being transgender is cool or is a fad. It's, that's far, that's far from the truth. Living with gender dysphoria is absolutely brutal. Another problem we see is kids are being administered medications such as puberty blockers, which are not reversible, hormone replacement therapy, and even gender altering surgeries. This is wrong as child fetal transition to their legally age of eighteen would occur. In many terms, we tell the truth to kids. We're hearing a lot about pronouns and non-binary. The truth of the matter is that you were born male, you were born female, and some few because of medical quirks were born intersex with both productive parts. We are not assigned sex at birth. Granted, in Connecticut, you could put an X on your driver's license, and you could put an X on your passport. There's only two genders, not three, so please, let's let the kids know that. And we don't even recommend this to tell kids. Everybody's different, let's be kind and be respectful to each other. Thank you very much.
Shorjan So. I need to finish this because my teacher wants me to get a little loud, so I don't want to have to yell at you. Thank you. Good morning, members of the State Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Shorjan So, specialty special education at the kindergarten level in Prama. I need to let you know about the challenges, stress, and anxiety so many special education teachers like myself are experiencing through the CTE. The CTE says digital platform is full of glitches. I have received countless emails from my administrator and colleagues advising about not being able to access certain features of the CTE says such as paperwork due to having to wait for technical assistance. In addition to lack of access, some glitches require us teachers to enter and re-enter information that disappears when switching in between screens or after it has been saved. The result is having delayed on getting mandated paperwork out in a timely manner, which can cause issues with being out of compliance with state and federal laws. Number two, the lack of training so far. The training provided on how the ECT says is not comprehensive enough and does not allow teachers to practice or exercise scenarios to address the individual needs of our students. Teachers have attended online sessions available through the state with questions about the specific case scenarios. The typical response from the trainers at the beginning of the online sessions have been, we are not taking, talking about specific circumstances in this training. This has caused immense frustration and forced teachers to have to work out of school hours to watch webinars. And this recently, I had to watch a YouTube video at home in order to learn how to use the platform on my own. There has been no time provided during the school day for professional development on how to use the system with fidelity. And in addition, we are currently working on the kinds of reading transition as well. So that has really absorbed all of our time. Number three, CTE says can have a negative impact on my students. Due to this system, I've had to use most of my daily planning time to problem solve scenarios and help my colleagues navigate the system. Yesterday, I received three calls in four hours, problem solving certain scenarios with my colleagues throughout this school day. The quality of my lessons have been diminished, which directly impacts the progress of my students. If I can't get my plans done at school, I spend about two to four hours after my children go to bed and write evaluations, progress reports, and answering family emails. It is unsustainable and is causing teachers to administer a preparation program in order to leave the classroom. Also, this has created some shortages, which we already have shortages in special education, and I don't think I need to tell any of you that as well. We are burning out quickly. We have a lack of resources, and our teachers deserve better. And there are a lot of complications, and our responsibility to teach them in a least restrictive environment. Finally, I just have five suggestions, and I hope it will only take me 10 seconds. Number one, pause the role of a CTE says. Number two, train master in-person trainer CTE says by the CTE department and have them trained in person at every school. Hold online and in-person professional development for all specialized teaching teachers and related service personnel, a lot of related service personnel haven't even had the opportunity to even attend some of our trains. Look for new programs, witnesses that have been discovered through this rollout period and pinpoint improvement where needed. And number five, provide online technical support as the difference between specific special pages that come up during the IET creation process. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Wilson Dawson.
Danielle Ferguson, and I reside at 27 Sheffield Street, Old Saver, Connecticut. Good morning, members of the State Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my colleagues. I'm a special education teacher at Daniel Hem High School in Ison, Connecticut. I'm here to share my experience with CTE says census implementation at the outset of the school year. I have been a special education teacher since 1995, where my career has given me the opportunity to teach in a variety of districts, including California. The average burnout rate for special education teachers, as you know, is an average of five years. But for me, it's part of who I am and my life's purpose. I love what I do. With that being said, the pressure being put on us over the years, for the past few years, I'm sorry, the pressure being put on us as educators as the years have progressed are untenable. COVID tested all of our results. Post-COVID teaching has shared its challenges, still trying to hang on and survive the best for our students. But more and more is being expected of us. If we're rolling out a new IET implementation system on the heels of COVID, might not have been the best timing. I'm lucky that I have a special education coordinator who offered us training over the summer. Many sessions were available. However, I honestly didn't have the brain space or the emotional space to attend, to attend day lecture for such a huge endeavor at the end of the school year. I knew I would be ready to take on the challenge in September. So, learning the new system. It's been a process. I consider myself tech savvy, and this program is most definitely not intuitive at all. I have to infer my step-by-step notes, at least even just to log on to the first few IETs that I had to write. And the documents and resources online and provided by the state is really, really cumbersome. It's not like a step-by-step, easy resource for us to get through, like you have to read the paragraphs in order to figure stuff out. And that, no one has the time for that in order to do our job so much. However, I do appreciate the structure of CTE says. When I share the present levels, then right below it, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I do appreciate the structure of CTE says, where I share the present levels, and then right below it, I'm able to enter goals and objectives. I also do appreciate that it will be easier for my juniors and seniors in high school to read and comprehend the document. One of my latest frustrations with the program that I hope will be an easy fix and will help all of us is the five minute timing out of the program. If I'm trying to write IET on my work, and a student comes into my office asking for help, and I have to click that save button, because in the five minutes, all of my work is lost. Our jobs are hard enough, rather than having us have to re-enter information. I mean, I hope that it's quick fix, and I think that would save hours and hours of time in my college. The timing of the documents, the main sections that make it, where you need to sit and focus on the document, makes it really, really difficult for us to complete the document at work. I find myself having to take the paperwork home. Any long time do I have? Pardon? Okay. As educators and special education consultants for the needed shows in our state, we really deserve to be a rollout, and I'm hoping that you can listen to the teachers in the state and the coordinators, and hoping to set it together, because it is a decent, diverse, human system. So thank you very much for your time.
Elizabeth Sked.
Good morning, Chairperson, Vice Chair, Commissioner, and members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Sked, and I'm an education issue specialist for Connecticut Education Association. It's often difficult for our members to testify at State Board of Ed meetings during the school day, so I'm here to read into the record comments from CEA Treasurer Stephanie Wander. Good morning, Stephanie Wander, Special Works with Transition Students Age 18 to 22. I worked at CES for over 28 years, serving as a special educator, as well as a job coach and parent educator. I'm here today to tell you about the incredible difficulties resulting from the rollout of CTE says, a system for reporting special education compliance that at first looked like an improvement. However, the system has its faults and failures. Now, I wouldn't be submitting this testimony if this system worked as it wasn't intended to. I would be in my classroom with my students, not worrying every time I had an upcoming ECT and whether I would get it all done alongside all the other requirements that have been piled onto the teaching profession through health. You see, I often speak to special educators across the state in my elected positions as Treasurer of the Connecticut Education Association. I've heard their concerns thousands of times over the past six months, many of which I'll share with you today. Special education teachers have always needed to work way beyond their contracted hours to write IETs and evaluation reports. This new system is even more time consuming. Special education teachers are leaving the profession because it's impossible to meet all the demands put upon us. Currently, in some districts, administration tells teachers to take time to write reports, conduct testing, et cetera, and they often have classes covered. Teachers take the time to write substitute plans, but then are told there are no substitutes that day or that the substitute is being assigned elsewhere. As a result, special education teachers spend even more time, more of their personal time in order to complete reports and tests in compliance with the state timelines and mandates. Unnecessary for training, a lack of training and support from administrators, code bugs, and glitches with the program, and inefficient data entries. For example, there are no dropdown menus for completing IET reporting. For example, CTE says does not always save even after pressing the save button multiple times, which is leading to service providers spending more time re-entering information. You're unable to delete external documents you upload. Sometimes the CTE says templates save properly, and sometimes it doesn't, causing lost data and time spent recreating it. Sometimes the system de-digitates across an entire entry, a goal you've inputted once and intended to only appear once, resulting in time loss trying to delete extraneous information. We're required to maintain case loads across two data systems, which has caused confusion and double work. Insufficient and ineffective training causing difficulty figuring out what is needed in each section. The initial four-hour training and subsequent training has not been effective. Insufficient common playing time, DLC time, and release time to write IETs and monitor progress. It's incredibly time consuming. From my own experience and observation of peers, we have students with behavioral needs that are not only challenging, but at times can result in self-harm and be dangerous. As teachers, we don't have the time to sit in front of a computer inputting CTE says during the school day. We need to be with students and continually directing the classroom and remaining staff so students can continue to learn and everyone can be safe. So what relief are we getting from the FTE? The department is providing 2.7 million to local districts for stipends. Additional compensation is welcome, but what our members urgently need is help and relief. We're asking the board members, yep, we're asking the board members and departments to consider the following. Allocate funds to help districts hire more parent educators and administrative help to comply with CTE says reporting. More assistance in the classroom would allow teachers to work on IETs during the day. Number two, provide sufficient funds to districts to compensate directly to teachers and related service for the added hours of work necessary to solve this shortage area. We all need your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm KCS, President of the Connecticut Education Association. And I bet you know what I'm going to talk about. We all look forward to living in special education, and I think our educators who took, by the way, their own personal time off, which is incredibly limited, to be here to speak to you. But I want to kind of pull back a little even beyond CTE says and speak to the fact that it's time for us to look at special education as a statement for reform, where we need to really step back and look and think, how do we make this a tenable job? Because the undercurrent of your testimony you just heard is that we have built positions that are impossible for these teachers to do. And so I think we, it's time for us to, maybe CTE says is the catalyst for this. It's drawn attention to the extra workload, the intensity of the workload, the diversity of the workload. And maybe it's time this, in this moment, to look at special education as a field and say, how do we build this so that we give our students what they need? We support our educators, and we build a system that's sustainable? Because what we know is that the system we stick with right now is not. When you start the school year, 25% below staffing in special education, and that staffing level hasn't improved in the school year. You're building a system that is bound to fail. So while CTE says is a piece of that, and certainly has drawn my special education teachers together to really talk about their needs, I think it's bigger than a program. And I think now is the time for us to pause, think about what we can do to make those positions not just livable, but desire to support and care for our most fragile children, and really embrace that and create jobs that are sustainable and manageable. And I think we can do that if we bring the stakeholders to the table. When I sit with educators, they want to get in that dialogue and say, how do we build a better, a better service man for our students? And they want to do that work. So I think now is the time. So while CTE says is an immediate issue, something that I think we all are feeling, the challenge of that rollout, the things that could have been done better. I think the big picture is we have a teacher population under a high level of stress that is exiting at a greater rate than any other population, and we can't afford that. We need to stop the bleeding there, and we need to do that with action that really is reform. To think about how we can do that, and I would certainly look forward to any opportunity for myself and my special educators to engage in the work that is transformative to special education. So that maybe in years from now, I very forward to panel of teachers that talk about how exciting it is to be a special educator in Connecticut. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to continuing working with you all.
Erin, Ellen.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Arum Arum. Hi, Ellen, I'm a retired professor from Central Connecticut State University, and I've been a teacher educator for over 33 years. As you might be aware, there's crisis in education due to teacher shortage that affects especially urban schools. We just heard what's the situation in special ed as well. A recent Connecticut insider, our AV classroom teachers that were missing. In Meriden, a family sued the school district because of the lack of a full-time geometry teacher. In a January Connecticut Post article, recorded that bridgework in schools had to move seven to eight graders from one school to the other because of a new teacher shortage. And as you're probably aware, the Connecticut State Department of Education website shows a severe teacher shortage statewide in bilingual education, mathematics, special education, as we heard, science, TFL, and word language. I realize that teacher shortage has many causes, but one major remedy is to increase the number of students in our teacher operation programs. However, another report from the state, 2019 State of Connecticut Teacher Workforce, reported found that a sharp decline in enrollment in Connecticut teacher education programs. It certainly is central, I'm aware of this shortage. And the report said that Connecticut tried to combat it by making easier to get teacher certificates. However, the report neglected to note that Connecticut contradicted this by establishing a new hurdle, the Educated Teacher Performance Assessment, or in brief, STPA. I don't know how many of you have heard about it. Since 2016, teacher candidates in Connecticut had to pass the performance test, requiring them during student teaching to plan a unit, video tape lessons, and write about forty-five, forty to fifty pages, pretty much a book. And then send submit video online to Pearson, a for-profit corporation, and also pays me on the notice for that. And STPA turned out to be a big distraction and a huge source of stress for student teachers, and deterred them from pursuing teacher teaching as a career. And it's documented around the country that this is happening. Most research found that STPA in 2013, most states, including now New York and New Jersey, recognized the problem and influenced the teacher shortage and had eliminated it as the requirement. I may add here that the only state left requiring STPA is Connecticut, North Carolina, and a third state, southern state. The rest eliminated it, provided it as an option. We're a new family. So what I, in summary, what I reckon, I call for you to follow suit and make STPA optional, provide a local alternative, and I think that's the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Muloney.
Good morning, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this morning. I'm Jim Maury, I'm the current Dean for the School of Education and Professional Studies at Southern Connecticut State University. I'm here to talk a little bit about our recent Cape visit and Cape response report. We welcomed Cape to our campus for a site visit in March of 2022, and we received our feedback November of 2022. Some of the good outcomes of the visit is that we have met in all standards. There were no stipulations following the visit. We did have some areas for improvement, which essentially can be grouped into three basic areas. Assessment and data, collaboration with partners, and recruitment plans with an emphasis on diversity. I'd like to share with you that we have already made progress addressing many of these areas for improvement. Certainly, assessment and data is our biggest hurdle, and mostly that has to do with aligning our key assessments with the CAPE frameworks. And so we're already getting to work to align those key assignments in each discipline area and with our education courses to make sure that they do align with CAPE. In terms of recruitment efforts, we actually have a lot going on in our campus. We actually have a recruitment plan, I just didn't particularly clear enough reporting. To give you an idea, some of the things that we are doing, we expanded our dual involvement partnership with three district high schools, now Meriden, New Burton, and Manchester. And Buckley High School will be coming on board. and Buckley High School will be coming on board this coming fall. We have eighteen districts now participating in the next gen teacher education program. We are participating in teacher fairs in partner districts. We're expanding opportunities for students to work in schools, and we're doing more work to increase pipeline programs that encourage students to come into education as a career. For example, we currently have a triogram that focuses on education. In terms of partnerships, we have increased the role of the partners in our processes at campus. Partners are now participating in the vetting student teachers. They're participating in teacher workshops, S D P A workshops, and in any area they'd like to. We're trying to be very transparent and share everything we do with our partners. We're also encouraging and inviting them to assist us as we look at the assessments to get their input of what is important in our classroom versus what's actually happening out in the classroom where the students will be teaching. And finally, we have many different initiatives that we're doing in order to increase or impact that we're making, like observing on the Cedar State Group, E E S Council, Connecticut I A T L, and the Connecticut Innovation Co-Orde. And I hear it's all going off, so I will stop and thank you.
Thank you. And believe that ends our public, I think we've got one other public presentation. Please report.
Oh, oh. You'd like to take, oh, now you get a chance.
Please report.
I'm Tom Simpoff from the Ancestry. This one is sort of way of education on topics about history. I don't know if you mentioned this book before, but when it called Windmill American, The Life of Eli S. Parker, he was a son of Indian from New York, but he helped write and surrender terms for Daniel Sova Ward at the American Courthouse in Virginia in eighteen sixty-five. So thirty people that came out two years ago and highly recommended, you know, his name is Sturgis Gruh Hocke. I know last year was the anniversary year of St. John's Witch Hunt, and I know we've got witch trials here in Connecticut and Massachusetts, and unfortunately some lynchings of women being, mostly women being accused of being witches, but there's a children's book about it, What Was the St. John's Witch Trials, came out about five years ago. It's very illustrated. And also, female rights, they were celebrated last month, but the book titles that came out same time two or three years ago, it dealt with Stalin to Tomás de Comilla from the Spanish Inquisition in the fifteenth century. It's a very good book. It included Lady Algas, which I got six years ago last month. So matter of color, kind of, you are, tyranny, sterminates we see today in the world. Another mission in education, teacher recruitment, and I would say, I thought about it once, I decided not to go in by choice, but keep really looking at a larger community of people that can help with different types of talents. And one of the recommendables that came out thirteen years ago called The Fourth Way, spurring the country recently. But it is hard to recruit people today, special education teachers, you know, support their efforts, and I hope they get all the they need and time to do the reports and enough funding for parrot educators. We have to go to that in Ancestry where I live. So we're at that point right now of funding it and making sure that you include the community whether they have children or not, and that look at, you know, more ideas and education along through all of us. This morning in New York, barely need to talk about what well-fitted kids are better learners and not fit by a doctor, Wallace Seagull, and another article dealt with Chet Pick, what they're doing in New York schools. You were trying to put a ban on it, but I know in colleges it's hard to do it, so you're supposed to do your own work and not plagiarism, so they need to look back too. And lastly, diversity and stuff, I'm hoping that'll work because I think right now it's Black History Month, and I know the anti-voting stuff governing of San Francisco, which is a racist state, Brown, Amadeus exists, and usually was racist against black people during World War Two. So I think I commend for what you're doing in diversity, but just, you know, like a slogan, we need all involvements from all communities here in Connecticut and make it work and not just, you know, you know, when it comes to certain months and do what's right for this country and, you know, seek out any type of injustice. We're at a turning point right now politically and culturally. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all members of the public, who have public participation, obviously an important part of our project. And the issue raised today around teacher pipeline, certainly around special education as a unique focus within the teacher pipeline, these are certainly on our radar and important. With regard to C P S, I am going to ask, because we had that vendor come in front of us at the October meeting and address a number of things that were to be done to improve the system, and then the vendor came again, I think, the following month with some updates. Given the level of concern we're continuing to hear, I would ask that that vendor be invited back for additional meetings on the board to update us on progress and resolving some of these issues as well. So with that, thank you all. There's no reason for executive session this morning. To go move to item four on our agenda, which is consideration of the minutes. And the chair was in a motion to approve the January eleven, two thousand twenty-three State Board of Education meeting minutes. We've got a motion. I think it's been moved to properly, properly seconded. Are there any amendments required? Any none, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, motion carried. All right, and five is, of course, the chair. Good morning. It is always a pleasure to chair these meetings. And as was mentioned, today does mark the beginning of Black History Month, and I want to begin by noting just how wonderful it was to kick off the month yesterday, I guess a day early, and being able to join in the celebration of the Connecticut Black and Latino history curriculum. So I was able to join Governor Lamont, Mr. Raphael Hucker, our Sir Keating, who I see in the back there on great Kennedy, Representative Bobby Gibson, we were at Cracked at the International Studies School, and the Cracked team joined us, four amazing Cracked high school students and their teacher at yesterday's event, which was highlighting the first year in which been elected at every Connecticut high school. So we're beyond the title period now, and it's important to mark that as Connecticut is leading the way. It was an inspiring moment to hear that students talk about how meaningful it's lasted for them. Four students of different racial and ethnic backgrounds all spoke about how instrumental it's been to learn about U.S. history in entirety. One student spoke about how prior to class, the stories of Black and Latino centered only on the story of struggle, but too little about our triumph. Another spoke about learning, and it was near and dear to my heart, spoke about learning about redlining here in Hartford region, and how it was inspiring his future goals to go into housing and housing policy. Another student spoke about her time in his life. The teacher spoke about how the curriculum was different, because most teaching about African Americans begins with the time of slavery, but in this curriculum, it allows students to learn the history began well before them, the kingdoms of the African continent, and how they influenced development in Europe. And a final student that delivered his message in Spanish to the Spanish-speaking audience and viewers about how meaningful the experience has been for him. It was a clear reminder of the importance of this work for our students and how Connecticut sets itself apart from other state teachers who are currently seeking to ban students from learning and ban teachers from teaching. So it was a moment I think to be very proud of our work, and I thank our commissioner for leading in this way. And it was also important to hear the governor remind us that it's just the beginning and that our work is not done until we move beyond elective courses into a place of full inclusion in all of our coursework. And Representative Gibson endorses this as well and committed to working toward that further on this session. I did this being with you last month in January, and thank you to Vice Chair Venom for standing in for me, and also congratulations to our vice chair, as she has been reappointed by the governor to the board, and we look forward to receiving confirmation in that process. Last month certainly offered an opportunity for you all to celebrate our Connecticut Teacher of the Year and the finalist, and excitingly since then, we've been able to celebrate her moving forward as a finalist. So Carolyn Kielmaat is, am I saying her name right?
Yeah.
Kelly. Oh, Kelly. Kelly. Oh, is there an Ellen? She did the opening for the International finalist, and so well deserved. All of whom we last met. Our commissioner had a successful rollout of the evaluation of her leave attendance initiative, I'm sure, but I just wanted to highlight the importance of the partnership between our local universities and the state department in the partnership that is funded by our extra dollars to ensure that we have a rigorous evaluation of the impact of the investments we're making into the recovery of our students. And the partnership is amazing enough to go beyond our intuition and guessing about what works to really solid research-based assessment of what's been working for our students. And I certainly want to add my congratulations to the fourteen of the fifteen districts who implemented the leave attendance initiative with great fidelity, that it surely showed that it paid off in terms of students attending. I do not want to let a board meeting pass without keeping you up to date on the Killingley complaint, which, you know, in November, we took action with regard to the complaint, and I previously reported that the board members who've been appointed to hear and stand have made themselves available, are ready for hearing. However, the Killingley team has fought continuances, and it's been a bit challenging to get that scheduled, but our board members are working on that and are ready for that, and we will continue to push to ensure that that matter is dealt with. Thank you to board members who continue to convene public hearing regarding charts for renewals that attend other meetings representing their role on this board. You know, the Connecticut website discussion is open. Many ideas are circulating. There are hundreds of bills already that are being vetted, of course, as you know, issues around school finance, teacher pipeline, strength in oversight, curriculum, and more are currently open for discussion and debate. We'll do our best to keep you abreast of places where you can lend your voice in support or opposition to things that we think would be excellent for all learners and chairing approach by legislators and advocates. Certainly remain open to input from all sectors as we strengthen our ability to really deliver on our promise. This one's agenda, we've got opportunity to hear and take action on several educator prep programs, as you've already heard through public comments, as well the virtual screening reading assessment, and we'll hear reports from our committees and certainly from our commissioner around the department. But I do want to end today where I started, I always have a quote, and my quote today is going to come from the voices of the Cracked students who spoke at the governor's press event. One student, Lana Lilly, a junior at Cracked Academy of International Studies, and she said when she was asked about the impact that the court has had on her, rather than the tragedy of minorities in this country, we cover their royalties and their accomplishments, which really widened the range of what I thought about myself and my peers. And so in that spirit, I think, let's continue our work widening the range of what's possible for our students. Are there any questions on my report?
Can I please?
Yes.
I hate to ask you questions, but it ended so wonderfully, but I wanted to circle back to the Killingley case. Is there a time at which an end comes that the continuance will no longer be allowed? How does that work?
So our council is not in the room representing us, but I would like if Mike can add any your own opinion on that?
Well, the, the, it's kind of difficult because I don't have the panel in this matter.
Right.
There has been some motions filed that need to be addressed, need to be fully briefed and addressed at this point. The complainant, the original complainant who tends for B complaint brought us to this brought us to this point there, seeking to intervene in the hearing. They filed a motion to intervene. Killingley has objected to it, which is inappropriate, as I think most parties in their place would do so. Killingley has all filed a motion to dismiss, and a hearing which needs to be responded to and fully briefed as well. And so that's where we are right now.
And what I tend to do is as, positioning Cunningham to provide a report for the board members as representative of us.
That would be great. Actually, this time we have no hearing schedule, our hearing schedule, we're canceled, and we are waiting for anyone else to be, so that's it.
Yeah. And I asked my question.
Sure. On the motion. Really has to be discussed between Darren Cunningham, who will be advising you as procedural advisor, and the panel, how he wishes to, how the panel wishes to proceed, whether it would like to make the legal decision or whether it would be more comfortable deferring to Darren to decide. I think probably Darren will be discussing it with you and try to come to some sort of consensus. And I would assume that Darren then would be issuing a decision that we have to handle.
And Mike, we will try to respect your role in this, not as our council, we would have, you know, with attorney.
Right, right. That's just my, you know, my guess.
Right.
Yes, you mentioned the mandate on the curriculum, African, African and Puerto Rican, mandate. When does that begin?
So is this school year now, where it's mandatory that every school district offer the class as an elective that students may opt into? And I believe I heard that there were about a hundred and seventy-five districts offering actively running the course.
Okay.
Others were, of course, active offer, but didn't, so we had involvement to actually run the course.
Okay, that was my second part. Thank you for answering that.
All right, let me turn it over to the commissioner. We'll have many more details on all of these things.
Thank you, and good morning, all. It's great to see you and happy to start over. First, you have my report, and I highlight some key topics, and then we'll transition to the agency update in a little bit, which we will have a feature presentation. We'll try to do that for each of our meetings, and the feature presentation today will be addressing the McKinney Vinto Law, which is really learning more about what the status of our students or experience in homelessness. We wanted to make sure we put that in the space for you. A quick update on Alliance District, and also today has a C P S update, our agency update, so Brian is here and is in the room, and will fully brief us as to where we are, and then we'll do a shout-out. But before we go to that, just some updates from my report that is in your packet. First, agency status, last month, we spent some time going through the status of our position, so I wanted to give you an update of where we are since we last met. We hired, again, thanks to working with D I S, we hired thirteen of our temporary worker retirees. These are the folks who's been with us and our staff who graciously agree to come back in and do some work while we back still behind them, so we were going to get those through the process. We have avoided three regional project managers in our academic offices. You know, there's a lot of work to be done there about our curriculum development, so thank you, those folks are literally here on board, and I know Irene is quite happy, and the staff in the academic office, they are as well. We have posted and closed, and in some process of interviewing candidates for twenty-three positions. So those are actually going through the process right now. Actively posted, which is now six positions, six posted are on our website, that will, that went closed will get us eleven more positions that are in the pipeline, and pending right behind those are seven more for posted, so all told, between what's posted, what we're interviewing for, and what is right behind, there are forty-one positions in the queue. And again, my thanks to D I S for their work, but also to staff here, because it is true your partnership for moving forward. All of the positions, I think, are now posted for our center for research, which I always get the name wrong, but our new center, and I see dual tiers for our Office of Dyslexia, and I think three of those four positions are posted. So I want you to know we're moving forward. It's been very helpful to have these conversations here with you, and I'll leave it at that. But I just wanted you to know that we are moving forward, and hopefully that the last of our update, that no less than a large board meeting that should be getting information from us as well and deputy commissioners. So we are already moving forward. So thank you for all your support and all your questions. It is very helpful to have that way that our back that we talked about, where we are for positions and posted. On my report, you see two emerging issues, no surprise to you, of course, but I just really wanted to list those up, that the talent office with Vice Chair Venom representing the state board has been engaging in reimagining educator evaluation. This work started in April of two thousand twenty-one via the Educator Evaluation and Support Council, so state So stay tuned, information certainly will be going to our policy committee and also to our state board as that work continues. And also teacher certification, I know you've heard a lot of conversation about that. We just shared with you our teacher certification and regulation review report that we were required to send to legislature. So that is in your box from maybe about a week or two weeks ago. And that is the initial work in modernizing our certification regulations, which are very, very long overdue. And again, we'll keep you posted as that happens. But those are two big areas of work that I just want you to know is a part of the work that we are moving forward. I'm really pleased to convene and invite recent teachers of the year and Milken Award winners to our commissioner's roundtable. We were literally in this room for maybe an hour and a half. Thank you to Sucko, actually, Sean, that they did the planning for bringing folks together. We even had food. We were really good to do that. But they came and really had candid conversations. I wanted to know, hear directly from them about recruitment, about hiring, their perspectives, diversifying their profession, retention of a strong core teacher educator core. They talked about their pandemic experiences, what worked well, what things they wanted to hold on to, what things we need to be thinking about, and that was really helpful. So I have a list of things that they shared with us, but really, I do really wanted to do a shout out and appreciate them being there with us and to help us as we are addressing so many issues relating to our educator core. As our chair mentioned, really pleased to have released the evaluation results of the learning engagement and attendance program. And really appreciate the staff here, Ajit, John, that are working with our districts and prioritizing improvement attendance and the fact that we are indeed seeing results. There's still a lot of work to do, but we are indeed seeing results. And it was an opportunity to demonstrate what you've heard is a nation leading research collaborative. The research, we now have a website and Eric, please send that out to our state board. Very impressive when you look at all the researchers who are really engaged with us across our institutions, public and private here in the state that is really working with us to make sure we know what works and it's not just about funding. We were joined at that press conference by the executive director of the collaborative Pursuiting Success, the organization that is tracking and promoting best practices nationally through our Ed Recovery Hospital project. They were the ones that wrote the story that Connecticut is a state to watch as they're invested in COVID dollars. And in our press release, Jim mentioned that while many states are making big investments in educational recovery, we have seen few states dedicate as much to the evaluation of those programs as Connecticut. And they got a chance, and they were here to also talk with the governor and talk with others. And they're working to do a national video project to share with other states about really something that you can stand up and utilize the assets in the state to really help us to answer the question, what is the impact of our investment? So we just wanted to add to what our chair said and to amplify that for you as well. It was a pleasure to be invited to the inauguration of the 2023 King Governor of our state, Ellie Mendez, from the goal of promoting strategies for connect with fifth graders to communicate their feelings, to educate them about signs of anxiety and depression and strategies to cope with those feelings, and to create a physical mental health hub with uplifting messages and interactive resources to inspire kids. So I look forward to, I was thinking about that, bringing Ellie and Eric Cabinet to this board of reunion practice, taking questions, sort of reporters, and really for our civic impaction, really. It was really great. And so look forward to supporting Ellie and Eric Cabinet during the term. We've already heard about our Teacher of the Year, Carolyn Kelner, and the fact that she's one of five, one of five finalists for National Teacher of the Year. So it's really a great honor for her, for educators in our state and for Connecticut. And boy, are we cheering her on. We are cheering her along and she's just wonderful and we look forward to the outcome. She, I think it's this month that she'll be going down to DC to be interviewed and we'll wait those results. And finally, to kick off a black trip from us, really I could see the faces as our chair was talking about leading this work and having the support and having your support as well. So with that, if there's any questions, but we move into the other reports to the board.
I want to just hear from the education corps when you have the meeting here, what is one thing that stood out when it came to the recruitment of diversity? Because that one was a concern that we heard this morning.
You know, in general, they talk about respecting the profession, right? They're doing a lot of hard work and sometimes it gets so challenging and it is so important for people to really respect the profession. And if you're able to do that, you're able to probably attract more young people into the profession. And we really realize that for a lot of our young people today, teaching is more about social justice. And so it is a way for them to connect and really change age. And it was really great to hear from these educators, who many of them have been in the field for a long time. They talked about some of the challenges during teaching and having to, you know, not earn while you're doing that. And that's why we input some money towards supporting students and looking to do even more in that space. But as I was thinking about that this morning, and I know Sean, we should plan for a future presentation at an upcoming board meeting to share more about what we're doing in that space and to certainly get your thoughts and feedback as well. But thank you. All right, so moving forward, transitioning to the full agency report, our feature presentation. I know John and the team, they've talked to us about our students' experience in homelessness, the status and where we are, and a great campaign that we just launched around that. So I'll turn it over to you, John, and the team.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me move into the next slide quickly. So good afternoon, good morning, board members. You'll recall last month when we had a presentation regarding attendance and chronic absenteeism. Board members had some questions around students experiencing homelessness and the data around attendance related to that. So as the commissioner mentioned, we thought it was time to talk a little bit about the work that's happening around our support for students experiencing homelessness and unstable housing situations. I'm joined with Eric Scoville, our communications director, going to talk about the campaign that's underway. And I want to acknowledge Louis Talarria, who is a education consultant in this area of students experiencing homelessness. Louis does an amazing job of working with partners and working with districts to ensure that support is in place for our students experiencing homelessness. Over the last few years, there have been certainly significant challenges, both pre-pandemic. You may recall in 2017, 18, Connecticut saw an influx of a number of young people from Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands with regard to the Hurricane Maria and other hurricanes. That was a significant effort on Louis' part as well to support those students' access. So to begin, we'll talk about the McKinney-Bento Homeless Assistance Act, which is a federal law that governs all of the supports for students experiencing homelessness and unstable housing. It was reauthorized in 2015 under the Every Student to See Act. It really focuses on the identification of students experiencing homelessness, school stability, immediate enrollment of students into school systems, and decision-making that is really dependent on what's in the best interest of the child. So it's child-centered decision-making with regard to schooling for that student. And this shows the Connecticut data with regard to homelessness. So the definition, the federal definition of homelessness is a little bit different than sort of traditional homelessness, because this, the McKinney-Bento definition is children who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So that includes students staying in a shelter, which can include emergency and transitional shelters, students living in motels, hotels, or other alternative situations, and then those sheltered in a car or park, abandoned building, or other places, so places not normally designated for living, right? And then we also count students that are sharing housing with others, so students that sometimes start doubling up or staying on couches intermittently, but again, lacking a fixed, regular nighttime residence. The graph shows Connecticut data. Annual data shows the highest percentage of families are in, or students experiencing homelessness are in double-up situations and shelters and other situations are usually a last resort for students. So I will turn it over to Louis to talk a little bit about the trends and the numbers of students experiencing homelessness, as well as the requirements, both for, requirements for districts with regard to the law and also the rights of families experiencing homelessness.
All right. Good morning, everyone. So as we're looking at that last slide, it's important to note that we generally do see that doubled-up population in our identified student population to be the greatest number of students and percentage of students that our school districts recognize and identify under this definition. And also important to recognize that shelters and those alternative accommodations are generally a last resort for families experiencing homelessness, that they, you know, seek the assistance of families and friends when they lose their housing, in which we count that as a doubled-up situation. So this slide just shows us the trends in terms of identification. Identification, as we point out, is really a key element to this statute, that districts have the responsibility to identify certain homeless children, all homeless children and youth. And the data that you're seeing is data that we report or are mandated to report to the federal government in terms of those students that are clearly identified in homeless situations throughout our school districts. So we can see that, you know, in this five-year trend, you can see that 2017, 18 has been the highest number recorded in the past five years. As John pointed out, that was the year that we experienced an influx of students arriving from Puerto Rico and other affected areas as a result of Hurricane Maria. And then you can see over the course of the next few years, we certainly had some significant drops during the pandemic as the challenges of families and schools, et cetera, took place. And we can see that we come back a little bit in terms of the identification in this past school year. And the trend that I would probably, you know, just estimate in terms of the current school year based upon our October census data, would probably be about at least a 25% increase over last year from where we're looking at in terms of that, just that October census data that was taken. But that's just my own kind of examination of that data in terms of the trends that we have seen in other years and also that census data. So under the federal law, there are, for those kids that do qualify under the definition, there are rights and supports available to them, notably going to school, no matter where they live or how long they've lived there, enrolling in school immediately, or staying in their school of origin, which would be their last school that they were enrolled in or attending prior to becoming homeless, we refer to that as their school of origin. Attending classes and participating fully in all school activities, even when records and documents are not easily obtained at the time of enrollment, so that they get access immediately to school. And then schools and families work together to secure all those necessary documentation and requirements that schools generally need in order to keep kids in schools. There's an explicit right to transportation to and from school, their school of origin, even when that's outside of their school district that children are being served in. So when children often get displaced, they go to other places which aren't necessarily the same school district that they were attending or living in that same school district. So it requires that districts share together in the responsibility and the cost of transporting kids, even when it's over district lines that a district may not normally provide to students. And then receiving all the other educational services for which they're likely entitled to or access to the same programs and services that are available to all students, especially for the supplemental services, which would also include preschool meals. From a standpoint of district requirements, you know, districts are required to identify and enroll all students that are clearly in these situations that we've described as being homeless, removing barriers to the enrollment, attendance, and success of students in these situations. So it requires them to review policies and practices and procedures on a regular basis to ensure that there's nothing that's standing in the way of students getting access to education and the services. Districts are required to designate a McKinney-Bento liaison in every school district, so this is generally a staff person within the school district, the administration, that serves to ensure that the law is carried out accordingly, which there are, you know, a number of responsibilities that are designated within the statute for the liaison in the school district to carry out. Disseminating public notice so that all families have, and youth have access to the services for which they're entitled to, and ensuring that staff can carry out the duties that are in the law of the school district regularly, which would include hopefully providing professional development to staff over the awareness of homelessness and the importance of identifying these families in these situations, immediate access, et cetera, and referring families to health, dental, mental health, housing, substance abuse, and other appropriate services for which they may need.
Thank you, Louis. So our traditional funding for the support for students experiencing homelessness comes from the McKinney-Bento Act directly. Typically, we would receive between $600,000 and $800,000 a year to support a competitive process to provide funding for liaisons in about 20 districts. Since the onset of the pandemic, we've received some additional funding, both through McKinney-Bento Act specifically, but also we've received $7.2 million from the American Rescue Plan, Homeless Children and Youth Act. So significant increases in awards. So the McKinney-Bento funding was provided through a competitive RSP. We were able to provide some additional funding to 17 LEAs. The funding range was between $20,000 and $100,000. The average award was about $55,000 for each of those districts. So in addition, the American Rescue Plan, Homeless Children and Youth, was issued both through a competitive application as well as an entitlement. Those were dictated by the federal government. We didn't get to choose how to put those monies out. And so we had applications, we were able to award 109 LEAs with funding, and the funding ranged from $5,000 to $473,000. The average award was $47,000. So you might say, why weren't we able to fund more? Well, for some of those districts, the formula only allowed them to have $2,400, $2,500, so they sort of opted not to participate in the entitlement funding. But it allowed us to use those funds to give to some other districts. Nick Seifert?
I'm Jake, Joe. What was that money used for?
Sure. Well, primarily districts, in terms of the competitive application, designing, you know, specific support and services for homeless children, you know, to complement and supplement what the district already provides, right? So that's a competitive grant process generally that we have always engaged in for McKinney-Bento funds. The districts, you know, they support things like tutoring supports, other supplemental supports, paying for portions, or in some cases, all of the position of a local liaison, specifically in the community that can interact with other community-based organizations to serve homeless families and children and youth. So there's a large, you know, range of, I mean, the districts have some discretion over how they would like to, you know, sort of supplement what their school districts already provide to homeless students. Through the ARP funds, it's similar. This was an entitlement program, so as you can see, a lot of districts that never competed for funds received and who never received funding in the past, were given these entitlements which were based on a formula, based upon both Title I formula combined with the number of homeless students that were identified in two prior years. So with those monies, many of the districts elected to put a lot of emphasis in terms of transportation, the expenses for transportation, utilizing those funds for that purpose, but also for a lot of things like that may they need, you know, struggle with having to provide which are, you know, eyeglasses, clothing, sometimes store cards or other kinds of essentials that families or youth may need on their own. So they kind of put in place processes that they could identify what the needs were and be able to fill what those needs are locally.
Hygiene products.
Mm-hmm. Hygiene products, et cetera. I would see it also for the first time. I would say that also, for the first time, under the ARP, it did allow for school districts to examine the need for emergency housing. McKinney never, McKinney funds, and they still don't allow for districts to pay out of those funds for any kind of like rental pieces, like, you know, whether to cover rent or security deposits or anything like that, they were prohibited. Under the ARP plan, it did allow for districts to consider, on a very short-term basis, to utilize funds to pay for hotel, motel stays or other places that would temporarily house families and enable them to stay safe during the pandemic. So some districts did elect to and are utilizing the funds for that purposes, to keep families in motels or hotels for very short periods of time, probably not, the Fed hasn't given us a specific on that, for probably less than a week, in order to maybe access the other supports that are available in communities or through our Coordinated Access Network at the statewide level for housing and emergency housing services.
What is the transition plan as the ARP money ends this good year, right?
I think that we probably will have use of those ARP funds through September 2024, I believe, for this particular pot of money. Transition plan, I don't think that the, to my knowledge, I don't think the federal government is considering refunding at that level. That was like $800 million, as opposed to generally what they put towards the Education of Homeless Children and Youth Fund, which is around $100 million. But you can see, it did go a long way, fund a lot more districts than we generally cover under the McKinney funds, generally prior to the pandemic, for those ARP funds. McKinney money or Education of Homeless Children and Youth Fund, it went to about 12 districts, were able to provide services in 12 districts through those funds. And as a result, you can see that those increased, not only on the McKinney side, where we were funding 18 competitive awards, and two are actually pending at this moment, two more. So that almost doubled in terms of the competitive application, but then 109 LEAs through the entitlements as well. So it really expanded what we were able to offer to school districts to support these kids.
And I'm going to add that we're working very closely with the Department of Housing, obviously, through a number of boards and commissions that both the commissioner and I sit on, around trying to find support for those families. And also, we have a meeting later this week with the Office of Early Childhood, where we're working on plans to support housing stability for head start students as well.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, the stability of these young kids, because Allen brought up a good point, there's not enough funds and you run out of them, what's going to happen because we have an issue with attendance to begin with. And so therefore, you know, and I'd like to see a study to see what are the successes of how are these students progressing so that we can get them off, you know, hopefully to the workforce and college, but being stable. And I'd like to hear that you're working closely with the housing, because there's issues in the housing now when it comes to rental, as we all know.
Yeah, and a lot of that is working with other agencies as to their strengths, right? So working with the Department of Housing to see if we can get folks in stable housing situations in the meantime, supporting students to make sure they have transportation to their school of origin, to make sure they are steadily attending. I know our performance office definitely collects data on accountability and progression of students experiencing homelessness, as well as obviously attendance is an area that we're focusing on as well.
It's an issue also in higher education. It's a vision step.
Yeah. So let's transition quickly to the campaign, because I think the campaign is certainly one big step in making sure that folks in the community, both stakeholders and agencies that work with students and families experiencing homelessness, are aware of what needs to happen and round this quarter round.
Thank you, everybody. Good morning. Before I dive in, I just wanted to thank Lou Talarida, John, and Pollyanna Brabowski for all of their support in pulling this media campaign together. It feels like we were meeting every week, once a week, for about a year to really get this off the ground, and it truly was a team effort across the agency here. So our new campaign titled "No Matter What" was established to increase awareness of the McKinney-Bento Act supports that are available, and also connect students and parents to their liaisons, you know, and really make that connection. So this messaging drives folks back to the landing page on the CICEE website, which houses a search tool, so folks can easily find their McKinney-Bento liaison within their districts. All of this campaign also hopes to increase the ability for school-based staff to identify all students experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity, which really continues to be a challenge. You know, we can identify some of them, but it's very hard to identify all of them. So this campaign also is hoping to assist with that as well. So how do we do this? The campaign targets parents and caregivers of school-aged children experiencing homelessness, but it also targets youth and young adults experiencing homelessness and housing instability. There's also a special focus on the LGBTQ+ community, as they are often disproportionately affected by housing instability or homelessness as well. In addition, we are also targeting school-based staff, district staff, and community organizations through these efforts with both a marketing toolkit, as well as direct grassroots outreach, where we are distributing materials and educational items right into the material, or right into the community. So that's really kind of a high-level overview of kind of the what here. To design this campaign, we kind of embarked on some research with our vendor and really dove into talking with the community, talking with those who worked, who work one-on-one with individuals experiencing homelessness and housing instability, but also speaking with individuals who have, in fact, experienced housing instability and homelessness as well. So we really embarked on that focus group survey effort, which took around six months to really complete. And from that, we were able to kind of glean some ways to message and some strategies. So there's really some key things that we needed to do with this messaging. One, we needed to customize it by audience. So the messaging for parents and caregivers is different from the messaging for individuals experiencing homelessness. It's also different from the messaging for pediatricians' offices, police departments, and, you know, across the board. So we knew that we had to, you know, design this messaging for each tier there, or for each person we're speaking to. We also knew this messaging needed to be clear in plain language, and it also had to be in multiple languages. So this campaign, especially in the targeted areas of this campaign, and we will be looking to expand that into additional languages as time goes on. We also realized that there needs to be direct grassroots outreach within the communities that are, you know, that have the highest rates here. And so we have members of the team going out into the community, displaying posters, handing out materials in the community themselves, so there is a touch point there. And then lastly, we gleaned here that there needs to be education. There needs to be outreach of materials to school staff about the importance of knowing the signs of homelessness and instability and how to identify those individuals. And there also needs to be education on decreasing stigma, as that stigma often increases those barriers to seeking support. Additionally, we were also able to develop the messaging itself from these focus groups and surveys, and we really came across a common message. And that common message is that no matter what, even when so much in life is unstable and you don't have a home of your own, you still have protections, no matter what your situation, there is support. School can provide stability in uncertain times and help you get, you connected to the supports that you need the most. So that's really the messaging. And we're taking those themes and those messages and putting those out there and blanketing it across many different mediums, so Instagram, Facebook, you know, social media, TikTok, Snapchat. It's also going out in traditional media sources as well, some newspapers, hyper-local newspapers, so those, you know, newspapers that are read in Britain, cities are very hyper-local, you know, ethnically diverse newspapers that are read by the community, that are trusted by the community. So we're really trying to target down to that level. And in addition to that, this will be on radio, we're doing some PR pitches, and many of you have likely seen it already on social media. We also pulled together a marketing toolkit, which is available on our website, cc.gov/nomatterwhat. All of our campaign assets are up there, and they can be shared by anybody, and we're asking everybody to go on there, look at the assets, and share them on social media, and really get the word out there. So that's really kind of an overview of the campaign. It was kicked off back in, back in early January, and we're likely to do a press release in the very near future, doing a more formal public announcement with regards to this campaign. Thank you very much. Question?
I have one comment. This last piece that you went over here, it's so great to see the platforms that our students use so often, and that is very often where we, as educators, receive our information, where it's from student friends. And so it is so important that that's out there, that it is not something you have to hide, it is not something that there's help for these, you know, these students. So I love that idea, with all these different platforms that are being used, because that will be most helpful.
As I like to say, multi-modal here, we try to get the message out as far and wide as possible through all the platforms. TikTok and Snapchat are the most popular with our younger populations at the moment, and then our parents, you know, the parents and grandparents targeted through traditional
And all the conversations that are happening around us in our state about housing, that we highlight the fact that our students are impacted. I just really want to thank the staff, including Lou that's here and the legal office, because I get a lot of emails from families or from students directly that say, you know, I encountered this issue, I'm now living something else, and they're immediately in the midst of that navigating and triaging and supporting our families. So just to know that that work is happening. And so we're making sure now that we have this campaign around the fact that this is a group of students. As John said, we disaggregate data by the student group, so we can always highlight and see what's happening, and use that information to inform our efforts, but also to put it out there so the community can see that that is an area of focus for us. So I just want to thank you all for doing that, and thank both for your support.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you very much. Irene has a quick update on Alliance Districts, and then we'll get our CCSE update. So is Irene enjoying it?
No, including this is something we've asked to have as a regular piece of our agenda to make sure that we, as the board, have a good understanding of what's happening in our Alliance Districts as a whole, and that we recognize where Alliance Districts are making, are making good progress, and also where there's some areas of struggle that we need to be more focused on. So thank you for pulling this together.
And thank you. Last month, we talked about Alliance Districts around attendance, and as we also quickly demonstrated our dashboard, our recovery dashboard, to see where Alliance Districts are located there. So this is, some of this is a refresher on who the Alliance Districts are. And Irene, thank you. I know Irene celebrated her birthday with us. So happy birthday.
I was at the corner of the room all month long.
And this is very proud of you and for my auntie, so thank you, Ms. J. So illustrated here, you can see the Alliance Districts, and the Alliance Districts program began with legislation in 2012, '13 to support district strategies to really dramatically increase its outcomes, and to close those achievement gaps that they were experiencing, and really by, we encouraged them to pursue bold and innovative reforms. And in order to provide support and accountability and monitoring, each district is provided with a turnaround education consultant or point of contact that do want to recognize our four consultants in the turnaround office. If I may, Jen Webb, Iris White, Greg Dresko, and Marc Hughes. These districts are high-touch, so they're out in the field regularly and provide monitoring every other week, as well as the other work that we do. Illustrated on the left, it just shows you the tiers of districts. So we have opportunity districts, those are the 10 lowest performing, the Alliance Districts, which are now 36th, and then all other districts. We do not forget them, we do also provide technical assistance to all other districts. On the right, you'll see, this is the list as of this year, because we went through a reup of the program, and in doing so, we now have 36 Alliance Districts. And listed in yellow are the opportunity, green the newly identified, so they've been brought into the family and indicating that through the letdown process, some do not have funding, but we do provide access to support. What's important to note here through this reclassification, there hasn't been movement, because three of our districts are no longer classified as opportunity districts, which shows that they've grown, and that they are indeed innovating and showing up growth. And those are East Hartford, Derby, and East Haven. And East Haven, who met accountability and support, so you can see why they were moving. But coming in to the opportunity districts are listed Manchester, Wyndham, and Thompson, and this is all calculated through the Accountability Index.
You should be very proud of the work that it's gotten to this point.
Thank you. It's been a collaborative effort, and we owe it to our educators that the system was designed for, to increase efficiencies, and we know there are pain points with implementation. Another example today was the ask, you know, for the five-minute timeout. That's something we can change and adjust, that's a new ask that we can put in place very quickly, and we know those scenarios happen. Those timeouts were designed because of confidentiality purposes, but we need to be responsive to the needs, and that's something that we'll continue to do. So you mentioned our rest Alliance partners that are assisting us with targeted sessions as well, and we continue to hold office hours. And another positive resource that we've developed are flow charts to help. We've heard again about the intuitive nature and certain sections that are less intuitive, so we've created flow charts to be able to assist, and those will be embedded in that searchable resource, where folks can type those in. Just the next slide, just very briefly, and then I'm happy to answer any other questions, talks about the usage of the system. So in a statewide rollout, usage is a very important indicator. Our vendor, again, has worked with eight other states in statewide rollouts like this, and despite the challenges, Connecticut's usage of the system is outstanding and excellent. You can see the number of users that have accessed the system, and you can see the finalized documents in the system have significantly increased since our last update in October. And we're, as I mentioned, we're heading into the spring now, and we do have over 80,000 students with IEPs in the district, so we expect that number to be there by the end of the school year. And then we'll have, as I've mentioned, this is a transition year, so starting next year, we'll have a full complementary of IEPs in Section 504 plans in the system. Right, and last question, just a graphic, a different version of the same upgrade.
A lot of what you're sharing is focused on how to help users navigate the system better, and I'm interested in your comment that this was intended to create more efficiencies.
Yes.
For, I'm interested in the feedback you're hearing, because I understand the user piece, but I also want to understand the system piece, like what, what of that, you know, are there changes that are needed there? So for the folks that have gotten to be able to use it now and aren't still struggling in implementation, I'm curious about the kind of feedback. Are they, are they sharing that, now that I understand that now I can use a system that's making my life easier, or are they finding it to be a cumbersome system? Are you hearing any anecdotal at this point, any sense of medical professionals that know how to use it?
Yeah, it's a great question. We are receiving some positive feedback, as you mentioned, when folks familiarize themselves. The first couple of IEPs that are written are challenging, but what we're hearing from directors is that it's facilitating a more collaborative process. Many times, a lot of those responsibilities are solely on the special educator, and the system really facilitates the collaborative effort between general education, special education, and also the related service providers. So some of those systems that are starting to develop around the system are really beneficial. But we do want to take care and hear the concerns about direct service and the amount of time and planning that goes into learning the system moving forward. Many of the efficiencies Many of the efficiencies won't be realized until next year. You heard one of the teachers talk about parallel two systems. We've allowed districts to use their old system for any review revised meetings until they are fully, until a student has an annual review. So that is difficult and challenging, but it was meant to be a flexibility for districts. So this is the last year for our, for example, for our 10-1 child count for special education, we're accessing the special education data and collection system of old and the new system. So that, so there is a year of transition where we're collecting data from two systems. And then next year, the time taken for the district to report data will be significantly reduced. And if it's helpful to the board, I can send you each data collection point that we used to have to ask districts for, now we'll be able to just grab from the system.
Thank you.
Your presentation with teacher meetings, we've not had kind of a special education 101 in a while, and I think it's really important, because there's so much that we are mandated to do under IDEA, and so as we think about efficiency, we all start to think about what it is that we're required to do, and again, to make sure that we have all the appropriate protections for 85,000 students who are identified as students of disabilities at this stage. And so that's really important for us. Families are also understanding and learning the system as well, right, and being able to access, get information there. So I think ultimately, I think we're on the right path, but we recognize there really is story issues and pain points that we really pay attention to.
I have a question. Can you, unique users versus the ones that are finalized? Could you define that, the difference between that?
Yes, a unique user is a single individual, so that individual may go into the system for multiple purposes, but that's how many unique users are accessing the system, versus an IEP finalized document which is specific to the special education module.
Okay.
So that's the number, total number of folks entering the system.
I was looking at the 504 plan one.
Yes.
You had the 3,000, right, that were finalized, if you go back to the one prior to.
Yes.
I think it's more clear for me, for the record, you have the, the 504 plan document to date are just 3,295, you know, and then at the bottom, the unique users who have finalized a 504 plan to date, 1,000. So I started to subtract that, but maybe I didn't add that. We'll see the difference, but it wasn't, we were not compared. You just have this date, somebody viewing it, and the other folks.
Yes, so the last column would be, if I'm a case manager and I have 10 students on my caseload for 504 plans, I as one unique user may finalize multiple plans. So that's why we're trying to understand the unique users as well as the documents.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
So just to, you know, really drive this home, the, if we're still looking at the 504s, right, so we have 16,000 number, that's students, basically, there are 16,000 students that have a plan, and there are 2,500 individuals that are putting the information in there.
Exactly, right.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you very much. I heard from you, so we can certainly connect with the vendor as well, and to make sure we have access for the community.
If I may, just one last comment for your clarification, that we have received positive feedback from parents. Our Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center collects monthly phone calls, and we've been, you know, kind of keeping our ear to the ground there for parents. There have been some issues with some access and accessing students in the portal, but the features of translation are very powerful, so families are getting documents in real time and translations, so that's been another aspect, but we'll continue to improve and like that feedback. Thank you for your time.
For my own observation, the 41,000 IEPs.
Yes.
That is, so are we at 100%? Like, how many, how many should that line say? How many IEPs should we have, and how many 504 plans should we have?
So this is an indication of the usage of the system to date. So by the end of the year, as this is a slow rollout, as students have meetings throughout the year, and more plans will be finalized. So by the end of the year, we would expect all of the 85,000, 2,000 finalized, and yes.
But it doesn't indicate that they're behind it, right?
Right. Yeah, these are just.
It's confusing with IEPs and who's.
And I can already see that in a different way, moving forward.
Yeah. For the, for the start, Chair, for the start, this is pretty good.
Very good.
We're looking at where we're at in October, and yesterday, and they're getting used to it.
However, we're not letting up. We want to make sure that we can achieve the efficiencies that we give ultimately what the design was designed for. But so thank you. Brian, quickly, just some shout-outs that I wanted to do on the next slide, that let's leave a session and mention for it. And in your packet, I just wanted you to do, to see what in your packet, that, I also need a welcome packet for this year, the one page, and you can see, welcoming new legislators to the, this day session, and you see the data.
That's what we're going to do later.
So they all received this, and I just want to thank the staff. We have a fellow that's here, and also Laura, they work together, but we just wanted to put something in there, and they think we're going to work together, so I wanted you to see that, and you have a sample in your, in your packet. The other shout-outs and thanks, so our own Keith Neubert, so National School Choice Week, did a great day in Connecticut, and let's make sure we send that link out to the board, so we can all watch Keith in action, part of our choice program, so thank you very much. As you also know, our winner, Milton, award winner, is always going to sit there and surprise folks, and in this particular case, our students were here, it was just so awesome. So continue to appreciate, and she was one of those that when we, when I gathered our missing award winners and Teacher of the Year for meeting here with this space with us as well. These are some, connected some pictures from our appreciation events, and announcement of our Carolyn Kellman as a finalist in National Teacher of the Year. You can see Board Vice Chair, and Don was there as well, I can't believe the picture you can see there in the room, appreciated them being there with us for that announcement. And there is our Chief Governor, Ellie Mendez, which again, we'll try to get Ellie and Ellie to come in here, and finally, a couple of pictures from yesterday, and we are sure it was there as well. I know Ingrid is no longer here, but it was really a great event. And for all the links, I'm looking to see, Eric is here, we'll just put them together and tell them us the votes, so you can stick through them and see the press that we have in advance. Let's move.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, Brian? Great, thank you all for that report. We have no items for action, financial matters, Eric, so we will move to item nine, the consent agenda. Are there any members who can remove an item from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove, I have it from me, but I believe it's AMD, or the first team, for CCU.
And Albert.
And Albert.
Okay. So then there are questions to move item nine A and nine B from consent, we will take a separate vote on those. That leaves on consent, item C, continuing approval of the UConn Educator Prep Program, and item D, revised menu research base, if folks are good on that. All right, the Chair wants to take a motion of the consent agenda, as Mendez will move.
Thank you.
All right, all of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now I will entertain a motion to take up item nine A and item nine B.
So move.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So.
Can you just pull this out, so if this is passing, it might just go to the board?
Okay, we pass consent agenda, item nine C and D.
Right.
We pass it on a consent.
Right.
Okay, that's been a, all right, we are now, I now have a motion for discussion on item nine A and B. We're moving them out of consent into an action, an item for discussion and action. Okay, so we have a motion, and a second on item nine A and B. Yes, thank you. What can you tell?
Is this an A or a B?
So it says the continuing approval of Central Connecticut State University Educator Prep Programs. Oh, did I call the wrong one?
My question is sort of bringing them both together, so I'm fine either way, however the Chair wants.
We get a floor.
All right, we'll vote on them separately, so we'll be nine A. So we have the process of recommendation to approve Central Connecticut State University Educator Prep Programs. We heard some during public comments, is there anything further you'd like to share with us before we answer questions?
Well, happy to answer questions, I just want to mention one thing relative.
I need you to say your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm new to this, yes. My name is Lauren Chafri, and I'm in the talent office, and if I sound a little nervous, it's my first time.
Well, we're a paper.
Right, so, yes, and I handle program approval for this day. But I just want to mention is, the Council for Accreditation for Educator Preparation Program came into being based on Special Act 1622, so we were required, State Department of Education and the Office of Higher Education were required to enter an agreement with the Council for Educator Preparation, and use their accreditation reports for continuing approval. And I think what's important to note, relative to accreditation, is it's predicated on the continuous improvement model. And areas for improvement can exist in every one of the standards, and there are five CAPE standards, and then there are substandards as part of that. And an EPP can receive an area for improvement in every one of those and obtain full continuing accreditation. When there's significant concern, EPPs receive what's called a stipulation. And when they receive a stipulation, that's when it doesn't receive full accreditation, and it receives what's called accreditation stipulation, or if there are multiple stipulations, then it's probation and further consequences. But it is common for EPPs to have areas for improvement, because it's exactly that. When we think about accreditation, it's based on what's called a continuous improvement model. And what it does is it helps focus the attention on the institution to say, okay, you know, here's the areas where you need to continue to grow, and in their annual report. And then our local control piece is the CSTE Review Committee. So each year, any EPP that has areas for improvement, and we have other EPPs that have continued approval with what are called AFIs, each year in their annual report, they address how they are meeting those areas for improvement, and then CAPE responds to that, and then the CSTE Review Committee will annually review that to say, okay, you know, here's the area that has been identified by our accrediting body, and then we, meaning the CSTE Review Committee, reviews that feedback. So I think having that sort of context of what it means is just important, because you can see areas for improvement and think, well, wait a minute, you know, what does that mean? So the language of accreditation uses stipulation when there's significant concern, so I don't know if that's helpful for context. Yes?
Yes. Well, so for full transparency, I had asked for the issue to come off, because as I was reviewing the materials that were provided to us, I would just noted, right, that there were these areas for improvement on both CCU and Albert Magnus' reports, but yet UConn did not have any, and it was the same recommendation for all three of them. So I wasn't really clear about what, what sort of rose to the level of a different recommendation, so I very much appreciate the explanation of sort of why that is. But I would also like to offer the gentleman, I can't remember your name, my apologies.
I'm Jim Obernich, you can just call me Jim as well.
Jim, I know in the public comment, you, I think you ran out of the three minutes. And so I would love to offer you the opportunity to continue sort of going through the areas that you all are working on to address the AFI.
Sure. I identified three basic areas, and my office team, the Dean's Office, has already worked on various transition plans and phase-in plans to address these areas for improvement. These are 23 years, and those on campus know me as an assessment junkie. I've had actual national recognition as an assessment person. So while this is a big area for us, I'm feeling very confident it's an area we can address, because CCU is kind of a leader right now when it comes to learning outcome assessment. And most of the issue I think we had with CAPE was aligning our key assessments. I think another important concept or context here is we, what's called an NCAPE legacy. So this is our first time going through CAPE, and so a lot of our programs had SPA reports, which had the CAPE standard, and maybe we made some missteps, or we did get right on top of that quick enough, but I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to do that. We have plans for workshops, make sure that all of our program coordinators and programs are familiar how to do those assessments. The efforts for recruitment and diversity, I think this is a problem for Connecticut, we're not alone in that, and I'm surprised that it's not an area of improvement for every education program, because when you look at the demographics, education programs are predominantly white. We are making a lot of efforts with the different types of programs that we have, I mentioned a whole bunch of them. I noticed a lot of the districts that we're partnering with are Alliance Districts that were just on the slide a few moments ago. I know there's also towns that are more diverse, so we're hopeful that these different pipelines that we're making, having our students in these schools, having the actual high school students, middle school students participating in events at CCU of increasing the diversity. And I, the thing I said in my opening comments, that plan's already been in place, that's work that's been going on for the last couple of years, that certainly the pandemic slowed down a little bit, but we're back up to full speed again and developing those relationships. I think we just didn't articulate it clearly enough in our CAPE report. I think for, in that sense, one of those areas of improvement, we already have made great gains on, so I'm not worried about needing that one. Partnerships, that's an area, again, that we've already taken actions on. We've had a lot of turnover at our university, and so there's new people in these positions, and we're establishing new partnerships, bringing the partners in, just changing a lot of their approaches that we, the way we do things, and some of that actually had already started before CAPE came to their side. So quality things were already in transition, and so again, I think we're making great strides on that, so I'm not concerned that that's going to be an issue going forward. I think each year, as Lauren articulated, we'll be able to identify the steps that we have taken, and show that we're making progress to improve on those areas.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. I found that one more question.
Go.
And this is more question for Shawna and Lauren, just because this was another one of my questions, so I just wanted to offer it sort of as an open question, so we're all understanding why. So in the report, it gives an approval for seven years, whereas the appendix, Lauren talks about an approval for five years, so can you describe?
Yes, thank you for that question. So earlier in somebody's presentation today, they spoke to the work being done on regulations. So the appendix is from the 1998 regulation. So the language of the 1998 regulation spoke to a five-year approval period, because the previous accreditor, which was CAPE became the accrediting body, they operate on a seven-year approval cycle. So that approval period shifted a couple of years ago. So every, just so, you know, every other EPP that you have approved already since we began CAPE, I believe CCU, Albert's, and UConn might be the sixth, seventh, and eighth, but I can't remember off the top of my head, they have all been for a seven-year period. So ever since that CAPE agreement came into play, it went from a five-year period to a seven-year period, because that is the accrediting body's cycle. And again, we're an EPP to receive stipulations. This hasn't happened yet, but like Jim mentioned, our EPPs are just coming up through accreditation over the years, so it may come before you that an EPP has stipulations, and therefore CAPE doesn't grant them the full approval period, in which case, a vastness of review committee's recommendation to the commissioner would be for that two-year period that CAPE offers. Does that make sense?
Yes, I appreciate it, and for whatever reason, my intention to be a health skills or just heightened lack of.
Effectivity. Give people an opportunity. And asking the earlier question of what rises to a stipulation, and is there something to note is that it is not just the review committee coming, or virtually coming and poking around. The EPP is submitting documents upon documents upon documents, and you know, what's termed evidence. And so when an EPP really doesn't have sufficient evidence to show how they're addressing these standards, that would make it rise to the occasion of a stipulation. So they're not just looking at the business, they're looking at three cycles of data, meaning a year and a half of data, you know, and then in the business, they're asking questions about all that data that they reviewed. So whether or not something is fully met, or has the areas of improvement, or has a stipulation, all has to do with the evidence that the EPP provided. And so there is a metric and a criteria, it's not an arbitrary distinction. So if they're, if they're not meeting the requirement, they will receive a stipulation, and therefore what will come before you in the future is potentially an EPP that will not have the ability to get the full seven years.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions on the continuing approval of Central Connecticut State University's educator prep?
I don't have a question, but I do have a good thinking, and I want to acknowledge this, is that when you, when you look at, as I was reading, the recruitment plan states, however the plan has unclear how efforts, assesses will be evaluated, I like, I have to acknowledge the efforts that you're going to go beyond the dual enrollment for the schools that were on our list as below average. And so I, so I mean, I, which could work. And I can see more of this happening, and again, as you go through the accreditation, maybe continue to expand it into more schools that are below average, what we saw today.
You have to.
And if I can make a comment, I'm Kim Castella, Summa Summa Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at Central, and previously served as the Dean of School of Education and Professional Studies. And just want to mention from a university perspective, to a little point, we are expanding out to support for dual enrollment as well as partnerships in collaboration with the school. And we have a pre-collegiate and collegiate area that focuses across all of our schools, but we're partnering more. And part of that is evidence in the Trio Grant for Student Success for Teacher Preparation that is federally funded to help not only with access, but also to help support the students throughout the program too. So at the university level, we're supporting these efforts to also make sure that we're collaborating with the School of Education and Professional Studies too.
Which I would like to add is, is very, we're talking about first gen low income students, a diverse population, we're going to get those in the Trio series. So that's a good point that I've seen in my years of work in IRET.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all, and thank you for being here for that discussion. Are we ready to vote? All of the favor of approving the continuing, yeah, approving the continuing approval of Central Connecticut State University's educated prep program? Please, so does that I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The chair wants to get a motion on item 9B, the continuing approval of Alberta's Med and College Educator Prep Program. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you, moved and probably seconded. Our colleague from Alberta, wanna join the table? And thank you to our colleague from Central.
Thank you.
So we certainly heard during public comment, but is there anything you'd like to bring to our attention as well?
I would, I would thank you for the opportunity. And I would like to sort of echo some of, to contextualize, I think that for us, all of these activities, all of these initiatives are there. It was our ability to communicate it out to our creditors in a way that met their frameworks that at times we struggled with. And some of the different alignment with INTEPS standards specifically that previously we were using either specific SPA standards or, and also the PCT standards. And in addition, throughout the process, CAPE actually revised their standards while we were mid-process and rolled out a new handbook. So that was very, very challenging. However, they were extremely supportive, I have to say. And it was definitely a great learning experience for me in writing the report and going through the review process. In terms of the specifics, I mentioned some of our initiatives to integrate anti-racist teaching in our curriculum. We are very committed to that and continuing to work on that. I think what we need to do is to be able to communicate that out through our reporting. We are a small school, we really have a reputation for working with the individuals specifically because our cohorts are so small. So I do think that that affected our data reporting when it came to assessment. An example of that is that we needed to have a cohort GPA checkpoint for standard five, where we were very confused in that because we're constantly checking their cohort GPAs. It's just an ongoing, at every assessment date, we're doing it for each student and as a collective whole. So there were certain ways that it seems that CAPE was, you know, has a standardization of a framework where we were a small school that really kind of deals with this customization of learning for our teacher candidates. And in that way, sometimes we struggled to adhere to that framework. And that's sort of a general comment. But specifically, we want, but for recruitment, we are, we partner with Teach Connecticut. We are working on getting grant funds to frame in teachers of diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds into the STEM field, that's something that we're committed to. We have an MSBD in STEM, so we're really, we have a partnership with the STEM Academy. So we're really trying to focus our effort on racial and ethnic diverse teachers with... I also work very directly with UCAS in a number of capacities, but mainly in terms of recruitment, we are working with Supervisor of Literacy to do more direct recruitment of teachers of diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds to become certified one of two literacy specialists. Because that has been, you know, I know literacy is a big topic right now. We do have a really wonderful program that adheres to the science of reading that we're trying to get out to more candidates, especially in our, in our district in which our school is located in. The Supervisor of Literacy there has identified that there's still a lack of literacy specialists in UCAS, and that this is a big issue. And there is, you know, very specifically a lack of literacy specialists who are of diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds. So I've been working with her to do some direct recruitment for that program specifically. As far as our initial program, we are a diverse school, we are, we have a high rate of first-generation college students who have immigrant parents. So recruiting from within our own, our own thought, student body is something that I am working on, just getting out into the different departments, getting out into the classes, getting students to take my intro class where they can learn about education and hopefully enter into our program. What we have found that pulls them back is GPA requirements. So if they don't perform well in that first year, they struggle to get into our program where they need to major in their subject area and also get, you know, get through their teacher preparation program, their 39 credits and their GEDs. And there's a lot there. So we have been working with our tutoring services and our support services cross-check everybody's, each student's performance in all of the different areas with all the different people that they work with to see if that can help to, you know, give students the support that they need to keep their GPAs up and then get through the four years. It's very competitive, difficult to do between the subject area and the teacher education certification. And I think that that is actually a barrier for a lot of our students of diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds. So that is one way that I'm really concerned about that. So I think there's a lot of ways, but what we need to be able to do is communicate that out. So we will be working with our assessment coordinator very closely on this to report out for our April 30th deadline for the CAPE report, and we'll just continue to make progress on that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on all of that.
Thank you. For any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I'm looking for a translation on standard one, the second sentence under the technology assessment. What does this mean? The transition plan was not provided to outline how systematic triangulation of data along the case. Can you translate that for me?
Yeah, so that has to do with our, the triangulation that they're talking about is having the INTEPS standards specifically aligned on all of our documents. So the, we had them on all of our key assessments, but we did not have them on all of our syllabus for each course. So that is something, they wanted to be able to triangulate that the key, that when the INTEPS standard is on the key assessment, and the item on the rubric is saying that it's testing, you know, INTEPS standard seven, they want to be able to go to the syllabus and also see that it's where's the line in what we're teaching them to achieve that performance indicator.
Okay, so it's a two-note triangle?
I guess so, yeah. The triangulation piece is a little, is a little abstract.
And the transition plan just speaks to that EPPs have the opportunity to acknowledge, I haven't been doing this yet, and the transition plan is how we are going to be implementing moving forward. So they're saying, but the transition plan was not provided to outline how it should happen, had the transition plan been there, you know, then they might not have gotten that AFI. Because if EPPs are entitled and encouraged to acknowledge the areas that they need to grow and they can provide their plan for it. Yeah, that's the transition plan.
I wanted some clarity as to your recruitment process. If you can help me understand that.
Yeah, sure. Well, so we do, kind of historically, the college recruits for the teacher preparation program, recruit from our own student body for the initial program. Because they come in as freshmen, they're undeclared majors, they're exploring their liberal arts, we have a strong liberal arts beat at Alberta's. And, and then they make the decision on what, you know, what they want to major in, and if then they decide that they want to be teacher candidates, they have to actually apply to our program. So during that freshman year is when I'm kind of out there having conversations, going into classes in the different subject areas, explaining about our program, finding out, you know, interest in teaching, and from there, sort of making that list and trying to get those students to come take my intro class their spring semester of their freshman year. And that's where I really get, we read the children in room four, we discuss just the redlining that is segregated to schools, we discuss that ongoing court scape, and it really contextualizes for them, you know, their own learnings in the state of Connecticut as well. And then kind of inspires to do with their GPAs, kind of blocking them from entering into the program. And so we have some safety nets in place where they could then reapply the sophomore year, but we notice that the trends are that they kind of continue on, you know, struggle. So I think college-wide, we're really trying to address this with these different support services. But yeah, kind of going off from your question, but really, the recruitment is about, for the initial program, which is our traditional undergrad population, is about recruiting from this very diverse student body that we have already at the school and trying to get them to want to become teachers.
And I'd like to advance the question, are there support services in place, right?
Yeah.
And are those support services, are they working? Because, you know, when you talk about students to tutor, peer-to-peer, no matter what background you come from, because if your passion is teaching, you're going to kind of, I mean, is that happening?
Yeah.
Or are you lacking of resources?
No, we aren't actually, we're really expanded at our tutoring services. So now we have, we do a group of academic counseling, and we have found that's been so valuable. And it's a lot of support on just management skills, time management, and things that were holding students back and creating sort of this cognitive dissonance where they wanted to be there, but it got so overwhelming that there was a lot of shutting down. We've also, they've standard out our mental health services that are available, and students are really taking advantage of those. So I think the college, college, but they also, you know, inadvertently affect our teacher preparation program because if a student is struggling already in their subject area, who's going to advise them, oh, why don't you go add on teacher certification? That, you know, they do have another opportunity to do that, this opportunity to certify them now and get them in the field. I want to recruit, you know, as many as I can, but also give them the support they need to be successful to go through it in the four years.
Thank you. And thank you for being with us today. For members, are there any other questions on Alberta's Med and College Educator Prep Program? Sina, all of the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, then bring this item ten on our agenda, committee report. I assume the chair is present for academic Sina's assessment. Is there any report? Okay, account bill.
I'm going to leave this report when we meet on February 16th, and the meeting in Florida will be on the agenda.
Finance?
Leadership.
So morning. And that is it?
So we just met this morning, and we have a discussion, presentation discussion before the board here in March. And then we see around six at a time in Connecticut and an impact on LTVP students. And so it's a really rich discussion. I want to appreciate Bollie's time and passion in putting together the presentation and coming forward with some proposals that we will plan for them to come into a presentation here at a March meeting. So it could be for all of our questions.
Thank you. Any questions? So let's move to the podium. All right, our CTEC.
For a report? Hi, everyone. I didn't want to be coughing all in. CTEC and Governor's Workforce Council are collaborating on expansion plans for health technology career pathways throughout the state of Connecticut. And we beg Dr. Kelly and the Larrys for including us in that effort. In honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, US Senator Chris Murphy announced the 15 winners of his seventh annual Martin Luther King Jr. Day essay contest. This year, Murphy received close to 2,000 entries from elementary, middle, and high school students from across Connecticut, reflecting on Dr. King's dream and their own aspirations. Of those 15, three winners were CTEC students from Prince, Wright Path, and Wyndham Path. And we congratulate our students on that. Biroll Corporation, Killian Way, is sponsoring the trip. They are paying for 20 students and five chaperones to go. This trip will be for a weekend day. We want to thank Biroll Corporation for their continued support of our students and partnership with our students. Biroll is a global manufacturer of engineered vacuums, shins, and installation machines. And the board will meet on the 15th for a secondary meeting.
Amazing, you did that report.
Yeah.
Looking for partners on this business meeting? Are there any questions? Great, wonderful. Completely commend the students, essay winners, and the team that's been selected for the Walt Disney opportunity. Really wonderful thing happening in our CTEC. Woody was not able to be with us today with an MAFB report. Anything, sir?
Written, written, reported in the notes as in top months to major the Black Latino current course of studies, being in the commission reference of US Conference, yes, that continues with the teachers and educators being able to use the goal in Connecticut as a resource themselves. And then the CGS does, but Brian also reported out on that continues to be a major part of professional development that is offered to our educators. And just so you know, Brian Kraszewicz also sits on the Board of Directors, sir, along with me, in case you weren't aware of that. So he certainly continues to work very closely with them, planning, you know, that's not the correct, planning the PD for our educators.
Wonderful, thank you. Anybody have any questions for sir? All righty, we'll call in there till the end. All righty, you all hung in there till the end. Our faithful public, thank you for staying in there. We have no other items on the agenda. So seeing none on any motion to adjourn at 11:57?
Someone's second.
Thank you, moved and promptly seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? All righty, wonderful, thank you all. Al probably has something to add.
In J.
In J?
In J.